And was there an agenda sent?
Yeah, oh, I forgot. You know what? That's the one thing I forgot to print. I printed four thousand other pages.
It's emails at 4:20. Okay. From Jen?
Yeah, I did email it out. Um, sorry, that's my bad. Didn't print it. But it's a pretty easy, quick night. We got minutes, director's report, warrant signing, the other. So.
Okay, so do we want to start with the minutes and read the minutes from the last one?
Library trustee meeting as of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Meeting called to order at six oh one P M. President, Director Jen Crosby, Nita Abbott, Denise Conde, Janice Cook, Helen Herka, Terry LaPrada, Michelle Petrus, and Candace Ribeiro, absent Paula Lepie, Kate Murcher. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were accepted as read with a motion by Terry. All in favor? Director's report. Building and operations update. We are short staffed with the present medical leave. Some new volunteers have been recruited and are very helpful. All staff computers have been replaced with new ones. State aid was awarded as of twelve one twenty-two with initial award of nine thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents for the first half of the year. The second half award is usually about the same. Yearly library inspection is complete. Alarm test to be done twelve fourteen twenty-two. Jen handed out a copy of library budget expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-three so that we were able to see what it looks like. Questions were addressed. Current statistics update. Four thousand four hundred and seven circulations in November with a total value of fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Four hundred and eighty-one items from other libraries were brought in through delivery for our patrons, and we shared two thousand two hundred and forty-one of our items with other libraries. Circulation has gone up since October with peak times continuing in the mornings and around four P M. Saturdays have been consistently steady in conjunction with events. Holiday hours. The holidays are treated as a Monday holiday per the town. For trustee policy, the libraries close the Saturday prior to Monday holiday. The library will be closed December twenty-fourth and thirty-first. Staff development committee. Jen and Paula attended the personnel board meeting with a circulation job description. The company, the committee created was reviewed and rated for the wage scale as a grade two. Currently, it is fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents before COLA. It will now go to finance committee for review and then go before town meeting. Policy work, none this month. Warrants, two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-four cents, Go Net Speed and Midwest tapes, one thousand five ninety-four sixty-four, Baker and Taylor Mango Languages, and nine seventy seventy-seven Go Net Speed, Baker and Taylor, Midwest tapes, and Demco. Motion made by Candace to accept warrants, seconded by Denise. Chair Paula Lepie will sign warrants.
It needs to be changed because she wasn't here. I signed it.
Okay, I thought she was gonna sign them like later. Other business. Jen reported the library could use some inside painting and rug shampooing. Also, front door needs some weather stripping. Jen will put in a work order. Candace reported the chocolate and coffee program held in December was excellent. She attended the program and promoted the friends who made the program possible. Holiday winter activities are winding down. Children's programs continue to be run during Jen's medical leave. Jen will report in January on programs going forward. Next trustee meeting, January tenth at the library. Motion made to adjourn. Meeting by Denise at six forty eight P M. Respectfully committed, submitted, committed. Respectfully submitted, Michelle Petrus, recording secretary.
Thanks, Michelle. I don't know. Did anybody see anything?
No.
Had admitted any? Just that one, didn't you? Just that one. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
I sent you a screenshot, by the way, Paula. I sent you a screenshot of the agenda if you needed it.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, and director's report?
I'm gonna start with our quick little building update. Our alarm test was completed on December fourteenth by Alarm Works. They came and did that. They said there were a few sensors that needed to be replaced, so the town will work on getting that done. And then moving right into our budget discussion, I gave everyone a packet of the jillion papers. I'm gonna start with the first one that has the town Grammy seal on it. Our, it's funny because we had talked at our last meeting about how I hadn't seen any budget information, and the very next day I opened my folder from town hall and it was in there.
Yes, you saw the go.
All right. Right, we jinxed it. So once again, this year they're asking for our budgets to be submitted on by January sixth, which is this Friday, which is why we're meeting so early. They are asking for a three percent cost of living adjustment and a three percent total bottom line increase over our last fiscal year budget. Also, there's room for, even this may change as revenue figures become more defined. There's always a chance that it might change, but they was asking for us to submit our proposal on January sixth. So I worked something up. I did stop in and speak with Chris the next day and talk to him about, you know, what he thought we should do as far as the two part-time positions that we're trying for. You know, ideally, we'd like them to start July first of this next fiscal year. So I asked him, should I put it in the budget? Should I keep it out? Should I submit to? What should I do? And he said that his suggestion would be to do a regular budget, the way it is asked, and then to submit a narrative, like a letter. You know, we always submit a letter with our budget anyway, and he said, put in there a narrative about why the trustees, why the library thinks that those positions are important. So, starting with the letter, we've got our little Grammy library letterhead here. I wrote, and this is all from our chair's perspective, please accept the following budget from the library for fiscal year twenty-four. It was approved by vote by the library trustees on January third. It is the mission of the Board of Trustees to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of library staff in order to keep up with the growing demands of the community to increase hours and programming. With that being said, the trustees would like to propose adding two fifteen-hour-a-week circulation assistant positions to the library staff beginning in fiscal year twenty-four. This would allow for the library to have a front circulation desk sufficiently staffed at all times to help with growing usage and demands from library patrons. A part-time position would also provide much-needed coverage for vacations and sick leave. Having more people on the staff ensures that no one would be alone in the building at any time, which would increase safety as well. The library continues to be a main hub of activity in town, providing services for townspeople of all ages. The library trustees strive to provide the best possible service to all members of the community. Thank you for your continued support of the library. I didn't want to get too wordy because you kind of lose people when you get too much. And, you know, if this is something we have to fight for, I think, you know, when we do have to go up to town vote, if people are opposed to it, that's when I'm gonna bring out all my statistics. You know, all my, this is how many hours we're open. This is, you know, our square footage. This is the amount of people that come in, all the circulations we do in a year. Because I think it's really hard for people to, you know, envision why we need more staff. You know, it's like, well, you guys, you have three. You just got another full-time position. What do you need more people for? Well, in cases like what we're dealing with right now, we have somebody out on a medical leave. Neither of the other people working here are allowed to be sick. No one's allowed to die. No deaths are allowed in the family. You have like, you know, not to be, you know, crude, but, you know, it's just like the things that come up in regular life. It's kind of scary when you're like, okay, well, there's, I can't be sick right now. And if I were sick, I would have to come to work anyway. And, you know, you get into that, well, is it ethical to be coming in and exposing all these people to my germs? Things like that. And then I think it's hard for people who don't utilize the library to know that it gets really busy in here and that there are times where I'm all the way down here helping someone and the phone rings, or, you know, I'm over there helping someone in the children's room and someone comes up to the desk and has to wait. Do we have a portable phone for you? No, we don't.
You don't really want one?
We did during COVID. It would have been really helpful, but since then, you know, it hasn't been as big of a deal. During COVID, I was running around the building all day.
Well, it should be always someone at the desk, so you're right.
Like always someone there to greet people. Like you don't realize how big, like when the NBLC comes through or somebody from another library comes through, the first thing they're looking at is, did that person at the desk greet me? You know, did they say hi? Did they say good morning? You know, and it's, it's just good customer service. And, you know, when the three of us are busy, you know, there are times when that does happen or if we're not all here or for whatever reason. And with COVID, the increase in people getting sick and people being more cautious when they're unwell, we've lost a lot of volunteer staff. We've lost a lot of, like, you know, if somebody does get sick on our volunteer staff, they're usually out for like a month because they don't want to come back and, you know, get everybody sick. So they take a lot of liberties, which they have every right to because they're just volunteer staff.
I'm gonna give you.
You have liberties. I'm just saying. You're allowed to, but don't. We dock your pay. But that's the.
That's one kind of the whole point.
So aside from throwing everything I just said into this letter, what does everyone think? Is there anything that's lacking and that needs to change?
I thought it was well stated. I thought it was shortened to the point.
I think it answers the question.
I agree. I think, I don't think this is the place to, you know, put up your argument.
Get into it. Yeah. Bombarding with papers when we have to go and find the board.
And we have to.
Yeah, like we have to put in a fight. I can come with a lot of really boring statistics.
Well, you know, the biggest thing is, is that everybody complained when we had to close the library because we only had one person in here. You know, people do get sick, and our rules state in the library that you cannot have this open with only one person. You know, we have to lock the doors. Those are the rules, you know. So even the police are behind you in that. They don't want you in the building by yourself. So, I mean, what happens if you had to go to the bathroom? You gotta go lock the door if you're the only one because if someone walked in and you're in the bathroom, you would never know it. Or even you come out here to put a book away and someone walks in, you wouldn't know because there's no bells.
Right.
Oh, that's maybe, you could have just put a tinkle. There is a squeaky door. You have a little bit of a squeaky door. But, you know.
But yeah, it's.
We need to be safe then. Sorry.
The building is way too big.
It's way too big. And someone, I mean, I mean, even with the squeaky door, by the time you stuck your head over the stacks or wherever the heck you were, they could be gone.
Or they're, or they could be bent over. And if you're back here, you may not even see them.
Right. At the end of the day, like we do a sweep of the building, and if I didn't have somebody there watching the door to make sure no one else was coming in while I'm doing my sweep, like what if I'm doing my sweep over there, making sure no little kids are hiding and like somebody comes in and goes into the bathroom? And I'm leaving a lot of them in the building. I mean, like, things like that. I think it's hard for some people to understand, and we're open later than most of the buildings in town, you know, save for like the public safety complex. But like, we're here until, you know, after it's dark out and, you know, we're here until seven o'clock on Thursdays. We're here on Saturdays when most of the town is closed, so having some extra staff.
I don't think there's another building in town that we only have one person in it.
No, they all have, they have more.
They all definitely not.
Yep.
The dynamics that, you know.
Multiple offices and multiple, yeah.
So I don't know why people in town got so puffy-puffy when we had clothes because, and you can't just bring anybody in off the street to help you. You gotta get, you have to be, you know, serted. You know, you gotta go through that, and it takes time to do training.
And to have these like two fifteen-hour positions, like they can just be circulation, you know, people that put books away and work the circ desk. And that's, you know, you don't have to pay them a huge salary. They don't have to have, you know, a master's degree. And it's gonna be people who do enjoy working in the library and that are gonna just, you know, add to our staff and, you know, our dynamic that we have going. I think it's like one of those things, like we can shoot for the stars, shoot for the moon rather, and land upon the star somewhere if, you know, if they allow us to have one fifteen-hour-a-week position or both, that'd be great. It's worth a shot. Do we want to vote to accept the letter and have pause?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter as written and for Paula to sign it.
Now's the good.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to sign that one or do you want an extra one to sign so you can keep one?
Uh, yeah, I'll do that. Did you have enough?
Yes, oh, definitely. I made lots. So then the next page, we have the actual budget that I've written up for everyone. It might be on the back of your, yeah, there we go, the town page, the one with the town seal on it. So we have what I put in the actual budget, and then we have a little budget explanation to go with it, to kind of explain and show you how I figured the numbers. I did a three percent cost of living increase over what we have now. And, um, thank you. Figured out the new wages, multiply by our hours per week, multiply by weeks in the year, and then that's how I figured out our wages. I double-checked and made sure that I calculated our longevity for next year.
What, what does that mean?
Longevity pay is, like, if you've been working for the town a certain number of years, you get kind of like a little longevity offset on once a year on your anniversary date. And between the three of us, it equals the two nine seven five, which is a little more than what we put in for last year. And then the.
How come this just says part-time when we have no part-time? And you have an amount next to it?
I think it's just the account that they use to pay that position out of, and we just put more money into it. I think that's something that needs to be, to be fixed. Because last year I put it all into the wages category, and it was paid split still out of those two accounts, so I put it back this year because he's still paying it out of. And you can see where it says the actual for fiscal year twenty-two, it's on this line. So like that's the urgent services librarians pay, and that was the catalogers pay. So I just split it up. Even though it says part-time, it's the correct amount of hours for Jean for the cataloger. So that's how I figured our wages, figured out the longevity. Our grant and aid toward the bottom in parentheses is what we received this, this quarter, and I multiplied it by two because they tell you to do that to kind of figure out what you're getting for that grant and aid. And then our book budget has to be nineteen percent of our entire budget minus our longevity. So that came up to about forty and a half, forty thousand five hundred-ish, which I put a little extra in. And then our overall goal for the three percent increase, I added to our book budget and our supply budget because those seem to get utilized and depleted the most. We've got a little bit of money for repairs and maintenance. We don't really use as much. Our phone budget is pretty on point. It's the same cost every single month. Postage is the same every year. Our computer network, we have plenty in there with the ten thousand. Subscriptions is pretty spot-on. So really, the only place we had to kind of work with was supplies, which we will always use. And then our books, which also, that budget can now be used for technology that patrons use.
The book budget can?
Yeah, so that can be used for, you know, services like printing and stuff like that. So I have more leeways, so it makes sense to put the most amount of money into that to cover what we need to make for our percentages. And it's a pretty healthy budget for us. I think it's doable. It's nice to have a little extra wiggle room. And it was nice of the town to do three percent COLA. Last year it was two percent. Anyone have any questions about how I do anything or?
Well, you said that you ended up adding a little extra to the books?
Yes, I put a little extra in books and a little extra in supply, or yeah, supplies to make up the difference. So how I figure it is I take last year's budget overall and I figure out what three percent is. And I add it in. So I actually do it backwards. I put in what our total should be. So that's where I got the two fourteen, seven twenty, and I did it backwards. Like I took out our salaries, figured out how much we should have left, and then I disperse it through all the other accounts. So that's how I can kind of see where we have like a little extra, like we have a couple thousand dollars extra that we could pin into the books and.
Those areas, yeah.
The supplies. So it made for a little extra wiggle room, which was nice. And then if, you know, we do get those positions in the future, our budget will change for next year. Have to factor, have to keep those in mind when we're factoring in all our other stuff.
Yep.
This year it's pretty easy, pretty straightforward, nothing too wild. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the budget. I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Wonderful. I will submit this, give our letter, and let you guys know if I hear any news either way. Perhaps the positions, it might be a while. We did that. We reviewed the budget narrative. Our current statistics update for the month of December. We circulated four thousand three hundred and seventy-five items, which is a little bit less than the month before, a total value of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars in materials circulated, which was actually more. A lot of people said about movies this past month. Yeah. So you can see the value went up, but the stirk went down a little, so you can see where that difference happened. Four hundred and twenty-six items from other libraries came in for our patrons, and we shared two thousand five hundred and seventy-four of our items. And it seems like eleven A M. and three P M. were the busiest times, like our little peaks in our graph there. Eleven A M. and three, so right when we open and then right after the kids get out of school. Seemingly like them the most popular times. Which is good to keep track of those kinds of things for when we do have to talk about, okay, if we do get one position but not the other, what hours are we giving that person? Like, do we want them to be a morning person or do we want them to be an afternoon person? Like in a perfect world, if we've got both, we can have one morning and one afternoon person. They would cover almost the entire day Saturdays. But it's something good that we can keep track of that moving forward so we know when to meet people. And the last thing I have is a warrant. I have one because we've met so soon. It's four thousand and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents for Baker and Taylor Overdrive and Library Store. I want to pass that down to Paula.
Thank you.
Spent a lot on books this, this past month. Made a contribution to our digital catalog because every year they kind of, C W Mars encourages libraries to go in and see what your patrons are holding and asking for, and you can purchase extra copies so that they get to them sooner.
They say your library has bought another copy.
Yes, yeah. So I did a contribution of like a thousand dollars for the year. And I went in and I saw like which ones our patrons most requested, and I just bought extras. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the warrant and have Paula sign it.
Oops. I was talking too much.
Anybody? All in favor?
Hi.
It's chatty today. I've got a lot of caffeine. And.
And.
My last question before we get off topic. Our next meeting is for February fourteenth. Does anyone care that we're meeting on Valentine's Day? Do you want to change it? Does it matter?
Is vacation week the fun one week?
It must be the fun one.
Probably not.
Yeah, it usually is.
Because it's President's Day, right?
Yeah, so we go the President's Day.
So, I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. I'd actually have a Valentine this year. But no hot plans, so. I feel like that happens a lot. I feel like we end up having a little date here, which chocolates next month would be great too.
Keep them for next month when it freezes.
Right? There you go. You can, I'm sitting here going, and I am not a chocolate lover, and I can just smell chocolate.
I know, I know.
And I'm sitting here going.
Well, you can when it's really good chocolates. I know, it's different.
I'm sitting here going, oh. Um, I know I'm weird. I don't like chocolates. I have something for other. So, um, I know I have talked about this probably in the past, but Jen, what is the level you are as a director?
Um, I believe I'm a level eight or grade eight.
Grade eight, and the youth services is a seven?
A grade seven.
And the category is a what? A grade one?
Three.
Which with her salary, she really should be a seven. I think when last time we looked at this, I mean, she's the, what I'm getting at is that the town has not upgraded the grades. Her salary keeps going up, and she's graded as a, I think, a level three, where she really should be like a level seven because of her, her pay. And the town hasn't changed it. So I think us as trustees.
Who is this? Jean?
That's Jean.
Okay, okay.
So I really think as the trustees, either, you know, one of us or Paula or Kate, I mean, whoever, someone needs to go to the town and say, you need to fix your grades because Jean isn't a grade three. If you look at her salary, she really is like a grade seven. You know, she's, she works more hours and she does a lot more. You know, her salary just isn't quite right there, so it really needs to be fixed. So, you know, whether it's a phone call into them or we have to go down and talk to them, I don't know. But this is really just someone just missing it. It should have already been done in the bookkeeping side.
Where is the, where is the grade at?
It's not on here, but it is on their spreadsheet. Do you have that?
I have it. Let me see if I can. Oh, gosh, it's hard to.
Everybody in the town gets paid by their grade level, and there's ten levels in that grade. And when you hit the end, you automatically bump up to the next grade level because your amount puts you in the next grade. They just never really changed the bookkeeping. They still have her as a three, and she really is.
So she's getting, she's getting a grade seven pay.
So if you look at this, a grade, so she's making twenty-three seventy-two, and twenty-three seventy-two is a grade seven. So this just needs to be changed on the town.
Okay, so it's just, yeah, yeah, it just needs to be updated, yeah.
Right. It needs to be updated. It's just paperwork on the town, but somebody needs to tell them that whoever's doing the bookkeeping hasn't fixed it yet because they still have her in the town minutes as a grade three, and she's really not. If you look at the pay level going across, she really is a grade seven. It needs to, it's paperwork that needs to be fixed.
I mean, there's no room for growth because all three of us have kind of capped out at level ten of our grades. She's got ten rather of our grades.
Well, actually, I think she has room for growth because moving her to a grade seven, she actually has room.
That would then.
But, but keeping her at a three, she's maxed it out. But she shouldn't be a three. It really should be a seven. That's where her pay is. Yeah. It needs to be, they need, the town just needs to fix it, and I just think it's an oversight on the town's responsibility to fix that.
Where do you see twenty?
Right here.
She's got twenty-three.
Twenty-three seventy-two will be her new wage in, okay, so twenty-three oh three.
That's a, that's a five.
So it's twenty-three oh five?
No, it's a grade five. I don't understand where do you see seven? Am I looking at the wrong thing?
Going down the side. Down, down the side.
Oh, and I know it's me. Down the side, you look at what?
The first column.
That's the grade.
Yep.
Grade seven.
And what's the first number under grade seven? Twenty-three?
Twenty-three oh nine.
Oh, nine. And she's, right now, she's currently twenty-three oh three.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it. Okay, okay.
So, but come July, she'll be twenty-three seventy-two, so she'll be a grade seven come July.
That would be a long time. Yep, got it, got it. So, yeah, I'm not sure how that all works. That would be a question for the personnel board or personnel committee.
So, as I said, I think it's a bookkeeping issue, and I just think someone is just forgetting to, it, it should have been fixed when she came on full-time.
So who would fix that?
Um, assuming we call it Chris Martin? I don't know.
Yeah, I think that would be something you would have to talk over with Chris to kind of get more of an idea of how that all works and.
Yeah, because, I mean, whoever does the pay, I mean, it's, it's a, I think it's just a bookkeeping error that they need to fix it.
I mean, she's getting the right.
She's getting the right money. She's just not in the right grade.
She's getting the right money.
She needs to be put into the correct grade on that.
I'm not sure how they make those decisions.
Yeah, I can see about going and talking to him to point that out and see if they can correct it.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah. So that's my other. Is anyone else having a paper? All right.
Okay, so nobody else has anything else to bring up or anything? Okay.
Short and sweet.
Set for the meeting though, so we can. Set for the meeting though, so we can. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-four?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-four.
And I'll accept, I mean, I'll execute it.
All in favor? Aye.